Okay, thank you everybody. We're going to continue on. We are moving to unfinished business, item 10. And can I have a motion to adopt for a second read? Policy 4526, which is Technology Network for Education. Policy 8630, Computer Resources and Management. Policy 9645, Disclosure of Wrongful Conduct Whistleblower. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Yes.
And could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And for these, we have seen these before. This is our second read. And let's talk about 4526, Technology Network for Education. And on that one, there was just a cross-reference was added. Does anybody have anything they want to add to this policy?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the agenda. Is the short synopsis in numbers consistent with what we actually did? Or is there a typo there? It says 8630, added additional cross-references. Is that supposed to be 4526? As you say on the agenda?
8630, let's see.
I believe 8630, we also added the same cross-references, which were acceptable use policies.
Yes.
And both policies were lacking those as a cross-reference.
So 4526 also added it?
Yes.
Okay.
And 8630.
Okay. All right. That's interesting. Should've been reflected differently, but that's all. Not a big deal.
All right. But as far as the policy is concerned, does anybody have any comments? Or any requested revisions to Policy 4526, Technology Network for Education? Okay. And let's move on to 8630, Computer Resources and Management?
Data Management.
Computer Resources and Management. And Data Management. I'm looking at the abbreviated one. Sorry. Okay. Anybody have any comments on that? Okay.
I just had one quick comment. Scott, last time you had asked about email retention.
Right.
What that looked like. And what we found is that it models the schedule for ED1 for records retention. So you are supposed to be keeping your email in sync capacity that you're supposed to be keeping the other written records.
Got it.
But we do, for your edification, have our email from the beginning of time stored back on a server called Gaggle. So we really have access to all email we've ever had.
Okay. And the last one again was 9645, Disclosure of Wrongful Conduct Whistleblower. Minor revision there. Anybody have any comments on that? Okay. There's a motion on the table. All in favor? Okay. Nice work, Policy Committee. And Bill and Jen, thank you very much.
Just by way of comment to make you feel good about your work, I had another superintendent ask me, "Do you all have a policy committee?" Twice this year.
Boy, do we have a policy committee.
He's like, "You don't have a policy committee? That's your main business."
Oh, my gosh.
That may tell you what their main business really is.
It's micromanaging the district.
Right. That's right.
We love our policies.
That's probably right.
And we have no new business. So we will move on to staff reports and back to Dr. Donahue.
All right. So we did quite a lot tonight. There are just a couple of things I want to mention and I'll do so briefly. One is a couple of interesting things going on at the state. I'm not going to rehash all the, you know, everybody's running away from APPR as fast as they can, but they don't want to change any laws. And the school districts are, you know, trying to figure this out as we go through. But two interesting things happened. The governor's State of the State address will be tomorrow afternoon. Today, he released the 14, I guess, priorities or the 14. I think he's reserved the right to add to them overnight. But at this point, there are 14. The way it was worded, I took that anyway. None of them have to do with education.
Really?
Yeah. So I think somebody up there learned a lesson.
What a difference a year makes.
Yeah.
Wow, yeah.
Exactly.
See, they did learn. It is it, but education.
But that's by omission, huh?
Then, the commissioner, two interesting things came out. One is a story about opt-outs that, you know, New York is in a difficult place because the federal government is not supposed to be giving us all of our aid if we have more than 5% opt-outs. New York has 20% opt-outs. There is some indication that if the state is seen to be working on it, that the federal government won't penalize the states. This isn't official, but it's kind of the story. So my guess would be that that's part of what the commissioner's doing. It's just trying to show that she's working on it. And lastly, I heard just today that the federal government has come up with a potential waiver from state assessment, state standardized testing program requirements. They're going to do this for seven states as a pilot test to look at other methods of assessment.
Wyoming, Idaho, wherever.
No, she's, our commissioner's jumping all over, apparently.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, you know, a number of things about that. That's good just in and of itself and interesting. Would certainly indicate that this moratorium is going to get pushed off because I'm not sure how she would participate in this unless we changed the laws. So a lot of interesting things happening. And I'm beginning to think we have a pragmatist as a commissioner, which may not be a bad thing, given the amount of politics that are involved in this. She also came out recently and sent a letter to superintendents asking us for ideas on mandates that could be modified or eliminated to save money.
Wow.
Rather than going through the governor's mandate commission, where you go in, you never come out, apparently.
So, I'm sorry, Bill, who did they let go?
That came from the commissioner.
Two superintendents?
Two superintendents. And she did this once before. She likes to short-circuit the bureaucracy.
So will it be answered by the superintendent's organization collectively?
Yeah. She asked us to try to do it collectively. So Byron Hills already came up, come up with, you know, five suggestions just off the top of our heads. That'd be a much more effective way of going about mandate relief instead of changing laws. So a lot there that indicates, I kind of like pragmatic people in these jobs because the policymakers just seem to make a mess.
Except for our policy committee.
Except for our policy committee. Lastly, I want to remind the community that if you haven't heard already, on January 27, we're going to have an event. And actually, maybe we'll be talking about this later.
Yeah.
But I mentioned opt-outs and it would be an event that would help parents be more informed about what the opt-out decision means, whether they do or do not decide to follow up on it. And, yep?
I have a question for you. Given the new spring that we're enjoying with all of the release of thought.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any meaningful purpose would be served by speaking to Buckwald and Latimer, who have to be good people, I think, and do care what we say about making some inroads on getting the money back for the gap elimination adjustment that they've stolen from us?
Yes. The current status is the, I guess I know more about New York's budgeting processes than I would like. So the current story is that the Republican majority has made gap elimination a priority. That's one of the things they're looking for in the budget.
Okay.
The Democrats have made it. It's on their list, but it's not a priority. And my sense of this is the Republicans want to have their group of items that they can take credit for. The Democrats don't want that list. They want a separate list that they can take credit for. So there's some optimism.
Great. Even if it's a partial relief or spread out over a couple of years, that would be great.
Yeah. It would be.
We could do a lot with that money.
It would be. Thank you. That's it from me.
Thank you. Okay. And that moves us back to Superintendent for Business. Greg, did you have, was the budget?
Just a little add-on to what Bill was saying. The governor's State of the State address is also going to be his budget address tomorrow afternoon. Last year, we were all dumbstruck with the fact that he didn't release his budget after, which always comes after the speech, and kind of held the state hostage throughout the entire budget development process. We didn't get our state numbers till very, very late in the process. So you're going to hear some rhetoric going around about getting the state aid numbers released from the governor. And if you talk to anybody, ask, and we need to keep the pressure on to get those numbers. It doesn't mean a lot for us, but it is significant because it's almost 4% of our budget. And I've heard the same thing Bill has in terms of the gap elimination. It seems to be people are taking sides on it. Sometimes I hear from people that says, "Oh, yes, definitely, we're going to get it all back." And then you hear, "Well, we're going to make sure we're going to put money towards it." And it's like, well, towards it isn't eliminating it, so.
Please don't talk about it seriously.
Yeah. So I'm hoping that that'll happen. Also, one thing I didn't mention in my report tonight for the trend analysis was we did get our growth factor number that we'll use for the tax levy cap this year. And it's up by one full percentage point. So that's good news because what it does is that's the first factor in the calculation. So it translates to approximately a $750,000 increase to our tax levy before we even start with the rest of the calculation. So I was encouraged by that because that was very late in getting to us as well. It used to come in November and we just got it last week.
Wow.
So that's been delayed. Everything seems to be getting pushed back, which makes it harder for us to budget in a responsible fashion.
So that's tied to new construction or to expansion?
Yeah. Bricks and mortar, not assessment changes. Thank you.
State aid. Did I read somewhere that state aid might be going up?
There's always very large numbers being bantered about at this point. And you hear everything from 2.2 billion, 2.4 billion. Everybody has a number that they think it should be. It depends on what the governor comes out with and when he releases his state aid.
Right, that's true.
So it could be as early as tomorrow. We'll get the runs. It could be delayed again.
Okay.
I'm hoping it's not going to be delayed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. And brings us to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Tim.
Yep. I have just a brief presentation here. Rebated. Sorry. Sorry, STEAM. And the principals gave an excellent segue to this in their presentation. Wanted to give you a STEAM update as it's one of your goals for the board. So when Peggy talked about problem solving and critical thinking and when Debbie spoke about science and social studies and the shift instructionally, stemming from these five principles of 21st century learning, which we are focusing on. This helps us keep focused in our STEAM curriculum, not on the toys and the gadgets, but instead on the instructional value to make sure that when we're thinking about, we're going to introduce a new gadget, a new technology toy, how do we design the instruction? How do we integrate it into curriculum so it focuses on these five outcomes? And we're exploring these outcomes as an administrative team and with groups of teachers and through our learning communities and through other committees. What do these look like in the classroom? So let me give you on the next four slides, you will see examples of this coming through. Three of these slides on the top in the left show our coding. We did expand the Hour of Code, which was also mentioned by our principals. And we're looking at more ways to bring it into the curriculum. What it really does is launch the excitement and the enthusiasm that our students have toward coding and programming and technology. Then is they, carries them through many of the activities that they end up experiencing in the classroom. Something new we added this year is on the bottom right, which in our maker space, we started to bring in some exploration of circuits through electronics. Electronics is one of our strands in our technology curriculum. So this is our first exploration of it here with our young learners over at Coman Hill. And you heard both Debbie and Peggy mention cublets. This is something we explored last year through a grant through the Education Foundation and Coman Hill introduced it. This is actually in the tech lab. And as Peggy talked about, we're not having kids sit around at machines anymore just staring at the wall as they type, raising their hand to ask for the teacher. But instead, they're around tables solving problems. What these cublets do is it's an introduction to programming robots. So you actually can do programming by putting the cubes together instead of coding. So kids don't have to learn a language. They have to learn the language of these cubes. And they may be having to develop a little robot that moves or spins around or light flashes. And they have to do it through their exploration of these tools to figure out their functions. This is a very short video of some students doing it. And you can see as they're learning, they figured out what these cubes do. This is their very first exploration of it. So there's a motion sensor. So they had to create this so that the sense, it's sensing their hands and thus it causes it to spin and it causes the light to come on. So as you can see, one student here putting his hand in front of it and the light blinks. They had to figure this out. The cubes are color-coded and each code has a function. And we don't tell the kids what the functions are. They figure out how to put them together in that order. So they're learning engineering principles and design practices and programming at this very young age in a way that's accessible to them. You also see this at Wampus as well. So we're also exploring it. And these third grade students had to perform a task. This is some of their second year doing it. So they're getting more of a task to perform. So they are pretending this is a bulldozer and it has to push an object and they have to design their cublets to do that. So as you can see, that we're shifting it toward not just teaching kids something and then they repeat it, but it's more of a problem-solving, engineering, design focus. So as we start doing this with young learners, as they get more sophisticated, this is in our AP Physics course. You've had Dr. Beacon up here before showing us some demonstrations of this. He wanted me to show you these two pictures on the right, which are the infamous car crash test, where the kids have to design a device to put an egg in it, where it shoots at a wall at 60 miles an hour. And then the performance task is that your egg has to survive it. Can you design something to fit that in by putting it in like you would a seatbelt? It has to be efficient. And what he wanted to point out is that last year was the first exploration of this using the 3D printer so that kids could design something and then print their prototype through the 3D printer. He says they're getting more complex in their design of the device because they're looking at last year's models. He does videos of all this, so they see last year's design and kids learn on it. And they get more sophisticated each year. And he's very proud of what they did this year in their design. And the left side is showing his catapult project. Also, again, getting more sophisticated as kids use the 3D printer to make their designs, test it out. So you're seeing the design principles going from our second graders using cublets up to this part. And there's examples of this throughout our STEAM curriculum. We'll be getting more of these tools that will integrate through our curriculum as it gets more sophisticated year to year as we start giving kids this learning experience. So that's just another example of some of the ways we're integrating the STEAM curriculum.
Interesting reflection from an old timer at Coman Hill. I'm old. From Coman Hill to the high school, speaking of tools, I see tools. Hand drills at Coman Hill, screwdrivers, pliers. Kids actually needing them to, I mean, they're learning these skills with technology, but in many cases, they're actually having to work with hand tools to create things.
Great. I skipped Crittendon because in February, we're going to be bringing our technology teachers up for you to have a curriculum conversation. And we can go more in-depth with the tech curriculum at the middle school.
Okay.
And we'll have some demonstrations of what we're doing with kids there. But it really is interesting that we're moving toward, as we move toward a student-centered, problem-solving approach in engineering, kids are building and designing and creating in a new way.
Wow.
Part of their toolkit, in addition to hammers and screwdrivers, are also all these other electronic gadgets, which is making it really complex and exciting for kids.
It'll be interesting to see how this translates to the older schools as these kids are moving up. I know we've talked about that in the past, but how curriculum will have to change to really, you know, anticipate those kids are coming up and already have expertise and interest in those areas.
We do visits all the time, so I'm constantly asking us teachers to come down and we need to see what's happening in the younger grade so they can start to anticipate the type of changes in the curriculum and the instructional tools that we're using.
Oh, exciting.
You can see a world where in the high school, you'll have like three or four different teacher classes.
Yeah.
Not just AP, considered as science, but that might just be the beginning.
I think so. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. And brings us to our Assistant Superintendent for Operations.
A little more on operations and less on those cubes. Although I did try to angle those cubes and failed in front of a third grader.
It's not easy.
They're not easy. But a little bit on staffing in my notes to the board. I spoke a little bit about the number of retirees that we have this year for the CSEA, which is quite significant. We believe that has to do with some contract negotiations and has been very beneficial to the district, great employees. And we're in the process of planning their retirement celebration at the end of the year. But that's a pretty significant number for us. Other staffing, big staffing pieces are going to be coming much later in the budget proceedings. But it's important to know for now, we're noticing something in the preschoolers. Ordinarily, we probably have 15 to 20 children who are coming from preschool who have been identified by CPSE, the Committee on Preschool Education, that might have needs. And as we integrate them into kindergarten and we have a CSE to determine their needs, that is our normal number. Right now, we have about 37 students who are falling into that category where we usually see 15 to 20. So it's important for the board to know that we're looking at those numbers and we're looking at the services. And students who really are in need of services will receive them. So we are in earnest looking at that and how we can see what the needs are. Of course, it doesn't mean that every student is self-contained and vies to a classroom. It could just be speech needs or occupational therapy, physical therapy needs. So we're looking into that more closely. And you'll
Jen, just a quick question. Is that, I mean, is that also tied to maybe the kind of pervasiveness of early intervention? Or, I mean, that seems like a big number, right?
It could very well be. We also don't know that there are just some years where we're finding students have more needs than others. But I definitely think that it has something to do with our culture here and the availability of people to seek resources when they think they need them. Resources at very applicable moments, but because of students receiving certain resources doesn't mean that they don't have developmental milestones and no longer need those resources. So I think that's where our transition from CPSE to CSE is significant. And then the other note, you'll see that on the agenda, we were asking for approval for adding members to the District-Wide Emergency Safety Team. This is different from the District-Wide Emergency Response Team. You're not even going to be able to figure it. This is like the cube. But the District-Wide Emergency Response Team has been responsible for carrying out all of the emergency planning for the district. And we have been responsible for the revision of the District-Wide Emergency Response Plan. They require that we have a separate team, the District-Wide Emergency Safety Team, to review the plan that the District-Wide Emergency Response Team has developed. So the members are on the agenda and they will be reviewing the plan once we finish. I have to say that we are incredibly ahead of schedule regarding the new District-Wide Emergency Response Plan. Assistant Principals and I have been working in some subgroups on specific sections. And we've had the entire team together numerous times to look at it as well. And we anticipated coming to the board definitely before May, although it does not have to be completed until July 1st. So we're ahead of schedule as far as that's concerned. It was a good plan to begin with. That's really what we were able to start with.
Oh, good. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Brings us to Oh, yeah, no, go ahead.
Really, to District-Wide Emergency Safety, going back to just school safety and awareness, obviously, you know, we continue to have around the country this safety concerns in schools and shootings. I mean, it's been horrible. You know, I know a number of years ago, we underwent safety, you know, general safety. Is that somewhat tied to this, the emergency safety? I mean, those things go hand in hand, right?
Yeah. Well, same committees, you know, all of the bureaucratic jumble that Jen just gave you is made logical and effective through the district's emergency team, which Jen runs. So all of that bureaucratic stuff aside and the fact that we have to find committee members and things like that, why don't you describe how our team meets, how often they meet?
Sure. We are required to meet twice a year. Usually, we'll meet four times a year. And we will conduct drills in each building. We have incident command protocols involved. And we'll run those drills in collaboration with the local police department and the fire department. We'll do our lockdowns, our sheltering in place drills. So students are very aware and have numerous opportunities to practice. I think we do 12 fire drills a year in each of the buildings and we're expected to do more for next year. Lockdown, shelter in place. Students are, and now, how it has advanced in the District-Wide Emergency Response Team is we have to think of things like reunification plans. And we have to think of our evacuation sites. So all building assistant principals have visited evacuation sites. They have relationships with the people who are running those sites. We have our emergency response plans, our contact information for parents. All of that is very much localized by that District-Wide Emergency Response Team. And it includes assistant principals, directors, the director of transportation, health services. I think there are probably about 20 of us on that. Greg's on that committee with me. I think there are about 20 of us altogether, our student resource officer. So everybody's aligned with what our plans are. When we meet during the four meetings, we do simulations, you know, we'll do tabletops. We've had police here doing actual simulations in the schools when the kids were not in session, in the dark, to figure out where different classrooms were and to run procedures that they might find important. It's a lot of collaboration on an annual basis.
Is everything working smoothly with the sign-in procedures and the electronic systems?
Yes. Our Raptor system is working really well. And we're finding that the parents are able, at first, it was, it had a little bit of a hiccup because you have 75 parents lined up to scan their identification to come in. But now it is really, it's just a matter of course for parents and they're used to it. They don't mind coming in and it's a great record for us of who's in the building, especially during emergencies. In that event, we know where everybody is at all times. And we have had some negative readings, you know, it flags a parent and we have had to call the police and to have things checked. It's all very quiet and confidential and we have had no issues. They've all been just errors, which there is an error factor involved in that system.
I think we're maybe, you know, on top of all that, ahead of it. And I just kind of brought up the whole safety and security together. And I think the Raptor, quite frankly, signing in myself, having to go through it, you know, that I was like, oh, great, you know, forgetting that we didn't implement that. So it's great.
And we're doing different things to keep the building safe. I don't know if you noticed, but in the vestibules, if parents have to drop things off for students, they drop it off without actually entering the building, which is so helpful to parents who don't necessarily always want to swipe their card when they drop off their child's lunch. So.
And there's constant attention to this. We add particularly electronic surveillance. I mean, we're not in a position where we can do 24/7 electronic surveillance of every inch of our property. But at this point, I don't want to get into details, but we have a lot of electronic surveillance at this point so that even if something did happen, we'd be able to later on figure out what. We have a lot of photographic surveillance now, that's what I'm saying. And we add it constantly, as recently as last week we arrived.
I think it's important to continue to do that. Obviously, the sensitivity in the community ebbs and flows with the media. And just thankfully, we don't have any meaning. Yeah. So thanks for that quick update. It was helpful. But as you brought up safety, it kind of reminded me of the discussions I had with you, Bill, a few years ago. And just the, you know, client, clients, our community is certainly sensitive to, you know, recent media and things that go on, so it's helpful.
I think what gives me the most confidence is that the people who are on the District-Wide Emergency Response Team are implementing what we're doing in their buildings. They're articulating it to each other. And they have confidence, I could pull any assistant principal to go into another building and they can implement what they know in their own building, in that building as well. So I think that that articulation between four buildings and as a community is real important.
And there was a fire drill, a fire, that wasn't a drill. It was a fire alarm, an actual alarm at the high school. And Chris, sorry, was saying, and the principals confidently, that the kids filed out, I mean, it was handled beautifully and it was, you know, a real alarm. beautifully, and it was, you know, a real alarm, it was nothing serious, but, so, I mean, here was a real situation, it wasn't a drill, and the kids, you know, were.
Calling it the French toast test.
That's right. And nobody left, as far as I know, nobody left the school, everyone stayed, and went right back to classes. It was handled really, really well, so it's good to hear.
And it's something that requires practice, you know, even right now, what do you do if you're in a lockdown situation in a classroom and somebody pulls a fire alarm? As a teacher, do you know whether you're supposed to stay or go? So these drills are really significant for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and that brings us to board reports, and I just wanted to remind the community, I don't know when this is going to air, but the art show, the community, the district art show for middle school and high school starts tomorrow, which is the 13th, so it's the 13th and the 14th, and people can come to the high school, it's at Balfour Hall, it's from 8:00 to 2:30 on Wednesday and Thursday, and then the community reception is 5:00 to 7:00 in the evening on Thursday. So I, depending on when this airs, I encourage everyone to come out, it is an incredible, incredible show. And at the reception in the evening, we'll have music, kids will be playing their instruments, so it's really just a lovely evening, and the art is unbelievable, just incredible. And that's my report. Does anybody have any board reports or committee reports?
I can start, sure. Couple of quick ones. So we had a Byron Mills Education Foundation meeting last night. The fall slash New Year's fundraising drive went well, and there was a lot of giving, both directed toward the STEAM project, as well as some to the general fund, and so I think they were very pleased with the results, and they'll be in a good position to continue and support. The spring event will be on May 13th, and so that's really the next push. And I think there's also, there's also some discussion about just trying to figure out ways to expand the universe of donors, because we still, you know, have a minority of the community donating to the foundation, so that was a big topic of discussion as well. The second point is on advocacy. So we're gearing up, as was mentioned before by Bill, for this January 27th event, which promises to be, I think, a very informative and great event for the community, as we all care about, you know, these issues around everything from testing to teacher evaluations to curriculum rollout on the common core. We're going to have Latimer there, Buckwald there, as well as our Regent, Judith Johnson. And having the, I think having Judith Johnson there will be really differentiating, because rarely, I think, does a regent come to talk to a district. They do a lot of meetings around the state for sure, but it's special to have her here. And I think she's also very understanding around a lot of the concerns that, you know, we have here in our community about state policy. So we're really trying to generate a great turnout for that event, because I think everybody will learn a lot, and also be able to be in a better position to advocate for the changes that we need to have happen between now and when the legislature meets to pass the budget, which I'll go up to.
We have some to other districts as well, wasn't it?
Yes, yep. The other point to make, we had a session with West Putt, with the Westchester Product and School Board Association, where it was at the end of the year, right before New Year's, and it was meant to try to benchmark around the region, if everybody's priorities are the same around advocacy. We had someone there from the New York State School Board Association, someone representing the Superintendent Association, as well as the Suburban Consortium, which is a parent organization. And there was an incredibly, you know, I think, good amount of agreement on what the issues are in our region. The School Board Association, from the state perspective, is really much more focused on the financial issues, gap elimination, mandate relief, which obviously we all agree with. Less focus in terms of their priorities, at least as they articulated at this meeting, on APPR and trying to, you know, fix the law. But certainly, West Putt, as well as all the other constituencies there and the other districts in our area, care very, very deeply both about the financial side and trying to change the law in this legislative session around the teacher evaluation process. So continue to push, and they have a bunch of events coming up in the coming few weeks on those topics, trying to get in front of everybody that we can get in front of to work.
Seems like some great momentum in the direction of giving some more relief and things that make sense, so that's great.
It's heading in the right direction. Not there yet, but.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else?
It's been a while since I brought the community up to date on what's happened in the sporting world at Byron Mills. I know that.
Receiving numerous emails, wondering what happened to these reports, so.
You got to get up and follow them.
My inbox just overflowed, but I did want to bring two things up, which I think are important. Number one, our esteemed county executive, Robert, formerly of WFAN Astorino, issued on behalf of Westchester County the 10 best practices in concussions. I thought he was talking about politics, but I guess he was talking about athletics. And I'm pleased to report that Byron Mills actually exceeds those 10 steps, and it's something that obviously we're keeping our eye on collectively throughout. There was a great winter basketball classic at Byron Mills a couple of weeks ago. It's always a wonderful event, and it was great this year. Boys and girls played, I was, I got to watch one or two games during the break, I saw Byron Mills play Harrison, Byron Mills play Ry, and the boys' basketball, the atmosphere was terrific, and assistant coach Tommy, and those of you who don't know who I'm speaking about, he's there at every game, does push-ups at halftime, he's just a great kid, and it's always, it's always great to see him, cheer to get the fans moving. And the fans are pretty good, I mean, I thought the fans really behaved themselves well, and the students were really in great voice, and there was a great atmosphere. It's a young team, we'll see what happens, but it's very exciting, and I just wanted a special call-out to the hockey team, which had their annual Pink the Rink event, raising money for cancer research, which is always terrific. And they're also having a great season, they started off slowly, but they've run off a whole bunch of wins in a row, and I think they're a pretty safe bet to get into sectionals, and they're really doing very, very well, and the numbers are good, so that's a success story again this year, I'm happy to see it. And also, lastly, the boys' wrestling team has two wrestlers seeded in the top four in their respective weight classes, which is very strong, you know, where just, that program is relatively new at Byron Mills, just getting it going, and, you know, in the winter, it's hard to find enough athletic activities really, because the students are pretty much confined indoors, although this winter, they probably could have played baseball until December. But congratulations to them, and it's, again, another positive season, and, you know, Rocco Stagnas just seems to be really on top of things. And as I said to Bill a few minutes ago, less than 60 days, the spring season starts, hard to believe, but it does, and the defense of our state baseball championship, so something else to look forward to.
Well, Ira, the thing I would add to that is, in spite of the mild winter, they did open Thunder Ridge, and the ski team had a practice there yesterday, so.
We're thinking about the ski team.
There was an article about that in the Journal News, about how some teams have had to go far and wide to find places to ski, but it's been unusual in that respect. A year ago, a year ago, I'd drive, I'd ski in our driveway, there was so much snow, but it's been unusual, but.
So they do race on Thursdays.
Yeah, that's always the kind of risk, Section 1 skiing in the southern part of the section, as it were, it's always a little dicey, but hopefully they'll get most of their season in. They can't go to Florida like a lot of teams do. Santa Laurentians, I guess.
Thank you.
Sure.
Policy committee met yesterday, and you all will be seeing those policies very soon. Any other committees' reports? Okay, any topics for future agendas, requests for information? Okay, hearing none, and as far as communications to the board, none that I'm aware of? Any else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve our Board of Education minutes from December 8th, 2015?
Some move.
And can I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, were there any changes? Okay, all in favor? Beautiful work, thank you very much. All right, and as I said before, we met an executive session beforehand to discuss the items that I mentioned, but we're going to go back to executive session to talk about the two that we didn't get to, which were 3.6, Superintendent's Mid-Jour Evaluation, and one that we added, 3.7, Personnel Matter, Individual Employee. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, thank you for watching.